New mayor, sitting over here is the attorney, will just switch seats and come on up here, July 1st.
Are you going to his seat?
I'm not going.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. But we'd like to welcome everyone tonight, and those of you listening in. Our invitation tonight will be given by Department Alderman Jim Martin, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Department Alderman Ricky Garrett. Stand up, please. In light of that mayor, too, about 12 years ago, I had the privilege of opening this meeting at prayer. And I believe that was the second meeting that I was an alderman in. And at that time, I commented before I opened it prayer, that the US Supreme Court, just a few days before that, had handed down a decision that said that the town of Greece, New York, had the right to open their city council meetings with prayer. And so apparently, that question gone all the way up to the US Supreme Court, and they answered that, and said they had the right to do that. Well, I also couldn't help but to comment jokingly on that, too. And I said, "Well, look, that just goes to show you that the US Supreme Court gets it right, at least every now and then." And they certainly got that right on doing that. Clinton is a praying town, and it is a privilege to be able to open our Board of Alder meetings with a prayer. And that's a right that City of Clinton had been doing a long time before the Supreme Court said it was okay. And I anticipate we'll doing it for indefinitely on it, too. But it is a right and a privilege that we should not take for granted. If you would join me in prayer. Father, we thank you that we have the opportunity to live and work in this great city of Clinton. We thank you for the people that live here, for the businesses that work here, for the people that come to visit our city. Father, we thank you that we have so many individuals that volunteer their time and effort. We have employees that work, we have businesses that operate all together to keep this city to be a great place to live and work. Now, we thank you for that, Father. We know that you have blessed us with that, and we ask you to continue to bless us in that way as well. Father, as we conduct the business of the City of Clinton tonight, we ask for your guidance on our actions in Christ's name we pray.
Join me in the progress of the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, to the American and to the Republic, where we stand one nation under God, and in the mission of the Constitution and justice for all.
The clerk can call the robe, please.
Alderman Garrett.
Present.
Alderman Goffrey.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Here.
Alderman Chapman.
Present.
Alderman Willink.
Here.
Alderman Oliver.
Present.
Alderman Mott. Attorney Will Purdy.
Present.
And Presiding Mayor Filthish.
We've been joined tonight by Representatives Cleveland and Sill, who've come to our meeting. I would like to offer you the opportunity to come up and speak. You can bring out half some gentlemen you have with you.
Absolutely. You want to come up here? All right. Well, thank you. I'm actually here today because I think it's a fitting time to honor a little legacy that you will be leaving with us as you retire. So I have a proclamation to present. Generally, we summarize a proclamation, but this is a proclamation summarizing 40 years of your history. So I'm going to read it, if y'all will just indulge me in that. We put a lot of time and effort into the facts in this, and I hope we did a pretty good job. So it says, "A resolution commending the distinguished career and leadership and service of Mayor Philip R. Fisher upon the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Mr. Philip R. Fisher, the mayor of the City of Clinton, Mississippi, and community leader extraordinaire, is retiring after selflessly dedicating 12 years of service and guidance to the wonderful people of the Clinton community. And whereas, born in 1954, Mayor Fisher grew up in Jackson, Mississippi, attending Green Elementary, Bailey Junior High School, and Callaway High School, and he received his bachelor's and doctorate degree in marketing from Mississippi State University in 1976, and his United States Army College Master Degree in Strategic Studies in 2003. Whereas during his tenure at Mississippi State, Mayor Fisher began his journey into politics, as he was twice elected to the Student Center, served as Secretary and President of his fraternity, and was elected Mr. Mississippi State University in 1976. Whereas, in addition to graduating college in 1976, Mayor Fisher also exchanged the vows of holy matrimony with Rita Catherine Davis of Enterprise, Mississippi, in May of 1976. And they completed their family unit with the addition of two children, Brian and his wife, Mimi, and their children, Mary Elizabeth Hastings, Doxy, Graham Campbell, and daughter Dana, and her husband Andrew, and their daughter Catherine. Whereas, after graduation, Mayor Fisher historically joined the United States Marine Corps, serving as Marine Corps Base Captain and Platoon Commander, Weapons Platoon Commander, and Assistant Battalion Operation Officer. Whereas Mayor Fisher also joined the Mississippi Army National Guard, where he served as an Operations Officer, Planning Officer, and Commanding Officer of the 31st Rear Area Operations Center, State Drug Reduction Officer, Intelligence Officer for the 66th Troop Command, Deputy Commanding Officer, and then Commanding Officer for the 184th Command. Whereas in August of 2005, Mayor Fisher was mobilized for Hurricane Katrina, serving as Chief of Staff, and in October 2005, he was mobilized for Operation Iraqi Freedom, where he commanded the soldiers in Kuwait, Iraq, and Afghanistan, with the task of accounting for thousands of missing shipping containers throughout the theater. And his and his team's effort resulted in the reduction of monthly billing by the shipping companies from an estimated $25 million per month to $3 million per month. You could have some of that for the super project right now. Whereas Mayor Fisher was activated for Operation Enduring Freedom in June of 2009, where he served as the Senior Transportation Officer in Afghanistan, and as the Senior Transportation Officer, his responsibilities included the command of 43,000 soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and civilians, as well as all moving of food, fuel, and other supplies and ordnance in and out of Afghanistan. Additionally, Mayor Phil Fisher commanded the air asset associated with both troop and supply movement in Afghanistan, and had more truck assets on the road in Afghanistan on any given day than Walmart had in the entire United States. And his responsibility allowed him to work in close coordination with other NATO countries, including the United Kingdom, Canada, New Zealand, Australia, Romania, France, Italy, and Scotland. Whereas Mayor Fisher has received numerous distinguished military awards, some of the most prestigious a fearless combatant can receive, and they include the Defense Superior Service Medal, Bronze Star Medal, Matorious Service Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Humanitarian Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, NATO Medal, and Ranger Town. And whereas in his civilian life, Mayor Fisher has worked as an equipment salesman for scribbling pocket before joining the sales team at Procter &amp; Gamble in 1985. And during his tenure at Procter &amp; Gamble, he worked in the grocery, nursing home, medical, and dental vision before retiring in 2007. And he was recognized as the regional and national level for sales achievement. And whereas Mayor Fisher re-entered the political arena in 1993, where he was elected for the first time as Alderman for the City of Clinton, and he would go on to be re-elected that decision three more times. And in 2007, he was elected to District 4 Heinz County Supervisor, and then re-elected in 2011. And whereas, after serving as Alderman for 14 years, and on the Heinz County Board of Supervisors for six years, he was elected as Mayor of Clinton in 2013, beginning his first term on July 1st, 2013. And Mayor Fisher assumed the role with years of invaluable experience under his belt, and he utilized his training and experience to serve the role of Mayor with efficiency and effectiveness and respect. Whereas for the past 12 years, Mayor Fisher has worked tirelessly to strengthen the City of Clinton, improve infrastructure, and serve the people with passion and purpose. Whereas Mayor Fisher has also been honored with Outstanding Citizen of the Year Award, a title that reflects the impact of a lifetime dedicated to leadership, integrity, and unwavering commitment to the citizens of Clinton. Mayor Fisher, a man whose life has been defined by his service to the country, to his family, and to the community. Whereas in his spare time, Mayor Fisher enjoys reading history and political books, as well as visiting historical sites and presiding presidential museums, but visiting the grandchildren has become his and Miss Fisher's number-one priority. Whereas after 12 years of mayorial service for the people of Clinton, retirement will surely leave in void for governing and mingling with the people, the mississippianist, in the heart of Mayor Fisher. And he is overjoyed to spend time with his family and grandchildren, reflect on the countless number of remarkable people that have touched his life throughout 12 years' career as the mayor of the City of Clinton. Whereas it's the policy of the House of Representatives to recognize and commend the tireless devotion to the better of Mississippi, and honor the vow to the impeccable public service that Mr. Fisher bestowed to the citizens of Mississippi as mayor of the City of Clinton, Mississippi. Now therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the State of Mississippi, that we do hereby commend the distinguished career and merit of his leadership and service of Mayor Philip R. Fisher upon the occasion of his retirement, and extend sincere wishes and continued success for the joy and lighter days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I also have a flag that was put on over the Capitol for you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you doing this and going to all that trouble for me.
Well, it was an honor. Let's get a great picture.
Scooch in here.
Scooch. Just scooch, just go scooch. Yeah.
Can you see me really?
No.
Have to get her to box the stand.
Do I want to switch?
Skidin'.
What's skidin' you?
There we go.
Now.
There we go. Go back to the golden rule, can't see me, can't see you. Your recognition.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. That's a good summation. You got it, man.
Well, I tried. And I was like, I couldn't summarize the summary, so I appreciate that I let you read that.
All right, well, as I say, permit me, Mayor, we've got one more recognition from the city to do tonight, and I'm going to piggyback on Clay's a little bit, so he went in wet, so I'm going to present this, I'm going to jump straight to the body of this resolution. It covers some of the same grounds, I'll fast-forward through that portion for everybody, I promise. But we do also have a plat from the city to present to you, and the board and I wanted to further honor you, and so the resolution is follows. Whereas, the City of Clinton wishes to honor the esteemed public service career of Philip Fisher. Whereas, said public service career spans approximately 50 years and has taken many forms to wit, this is a portion I'll fast-forward through that covers a lot of the same ground. And whereas, the city believes an appropriate recognition of Mayor Fisher's service is to dedicate a public building in his honor. And whereas, the city further believes that the Old Town Depot is a fitting building for this purpose, as Mayor Fisher was a driving force behind its creation, has been a consistent proponent for Clinton's history throughout his career. Now therefore, be it ordained by the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Clinton, Mississippi as follows. This building shall henceforth be known as the Philip R. Fisher Old Town Depot. So thank you, and I would appreciate any discussion or comments or a motion from the board.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second.
I'll call all those in favor, so he doesn't have to.
Well, thank you very much. I am surprised, I'm overwhelmed by this. So thank you. I don't know what else to say. Let's move on now to approval of the city's ten items, A through H.
I'm moved to approve agenda items 6, A through H.
Second.
All of them?
All of them, there's.
We have a motion to approve them all?
B is the not included.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, our department head report was going to be given tonight by Fire Chief, a retired Fire Chief, Jeff Blackman. Unfortunately, his surgery he had yesterday hasn't allowed him to leave the hospital yet, so he will be out Friday. So we'll just move on from that and go to Board of Aldermen reports, if we all have any of those. So we'll go to the mayor's discussion and reports. Item A, Discussion Action Approval to Execute Necessary Agreements to Secure Bonds for Elected Officials, Officers, and Other Employees as Required by Statute. Mr. Volts.
Thank you, Mayor. As we celebrate the retirement and the end of one term, we have to prepare for the beginning of the next, and one of the things we have to do as a housekeeping matter is to make sure that we have bonding in place on all of the elected officials and some of the statutory officers of the city. So we're seeking a motion to that order.
Make to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item B, Discussion Action Authorization for the Mayor to Execute a Water Services Agreement Between the City of Clinton, North Heinz Water Association, D.R. Horton, Inc., and Mississippi Developers LLC Related to the Horseshoe Bend Subdivision. City Attorney and Mayor-elect Will Purdy will take us through this one.
Thank you, sir. As a side, I'm going to send the next city attorney to the legislature to get to ceremonial resolutions, because that is far faster than anything we're able to produce here. But no, this agreement simply, as you recall, a portion of the next portion of D.R. Horton's planned neighborhood out there is in the certificated Walker area of North Heinz. So they are, and North Heinz does not really have the capability to service it, so they have agreed to transfer that water service certificated area to Clinton. So there's some agreement in there between North Heinz and D.R. Horton. Really, Clinton's only obligation under this agreement is if that certificate transfer goes through and the developers put in the infrastructure that they're supposed to, that we will then agree to serve them water like we would in the other neighborhoods. That's really our only obligations under this agreement.
Questions, motions? I have a question on that, too. Of course, Clinton's rights to serve water was with our old city living land, so this is the area that they got annexed in.
That's correct.
All did, and North Heinz still has some of that, too. And over the years, we kind of talked to North Heinz about being able to get all of that area back to, that's within City of Clinton boundaries, back to the city, and they were asking large fees, things like that, too. It never did really work out here. And looking at that agreement, though, there is a figure, I guess, that D.H. Horton is paying North Heinz for the rights to transfer that to the city, I guess, too. I was kind of curious, a couple of things, how, do you know how many acres is involved here? Do you know how that price came about?
Well, the price came about, I think, I don't know what the calculus on North Heinz is in was, that was priced North Heinz put forward to D.R. Horton, I don't know exactly how they figured it. I would say, one thing to keep in mind with regard to, and not to jump ahead of it, but if you're going, is there a price for other portions of North Heinz there? Is that kind of where you're?
Well, and I was kind of wondering whether we were establishing a price per acre or something like that, too, that would be bound with in future.
Well, I was going to say, I think one thing to keep in mind is North Heinz doesn't have any infrastructure. They have the certificated area here, but they're not servicing the area, they don't have the infrastructure to service it there. So I would think, particularly anywhere that they're currently servicing them, the price would be much, much higher than what you're talking about for this area, I guess, which most of that area out there, they do service, they have water pipes in, they're servicing all the homes in that area. So, you know, they're realizing a tremendous amount of income off that, obviously. So that price, to get that, if there even was a price, which I sincerely doubt there would be, just knowing a little bit about how the Rural Water Associations operate, they're loathe to give up any certificated area, it's sort of an existential threat to them generally to do so. It's unusual for them to do this, but the reason it came up was because they weren't ever probably going to be able to serve it. So I guess my answer would be, I don't know exactly how they figured this price up, but my intuition would be something of a one-off.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. And Mayor, you've been, you've been in those negotiations.
They were negotiating between themselves and working to an end. And because the city wasn't directly involved, they owned it, and these other people are buying it, it was sort of, we let them do their own negotiations. It's going to be donated to us at some point in the future, is that correct?
Well, D.R. Horton, yeah, D.R. Horton is paying a fee, for lack of a better term, to North Heinz to relinquish the area, but it will go straight to, we'll file a certificate transfer with the PSC, and it'll go straight to North Heinz, too.
Just as it would be with any other subdivision's guilt, you know, when we accept the infrastructure. Bottom line, we're not out of anything on this, which is the important thing to.
I'm with you, I'd love to get it if we could, don't get me wrong.
I'd love to see it get on.
I agree.
She's kind of pondering how this might affect something in the future.
I'll certainly ask, don't get me.
Okay, other questions?
Make to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item C, Discussion Action Approval to Advertise for the Woodmore Subdivision Forest Main Relocation Project. Director of Public Works, Mr. Liddy, will take us through this one.
Thank you, sir. This project that we're trying to do right here at Woodmore is to help us out with some of the sewer overflow issue that we have right there behind, between the Maldeth and Billy Bird, the Bird Heights area. There's a creek there, excuse me, that 20, 30 years ago, an overflow valve was put down. We found out about it in February, now we're in a position where we need to try to reduce some of that iron and iron overflow that's happening. This forest main will help alleviate Woodmore's input on that valve by redirecting around the subdivision. With your approval, we'll advertise and hopefully not talk about this over for a while.
Make to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is there, could we get one of the grants that we did in Lake South Park for this? It's the sewage is exposed in that.
No, no, ma'am, that's going to be of a different parameter. Where, if we use the NRCS project, which is the thing we use, there has to be a sewer, it has to be, I guess, I could be saying this wrong, natural terrain that's jeopardizing our sewer lines. So we can do things to fortify the area around it, so it's not exposed.
Okay.
That's part of the next one.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item D, Discussion Action Approval Acceptance of Bids Received for the 2024 Bank Stabilization Improvements, NRC Project Number 5322. Award to Lowest and Best bidder and new construction in the amount of $113,706.50. Allowance of appropriate construction contingency, and for the mayor to execute all documents, including the NRCS document package and contracts required for the project improvements. Did you write that?
We're good friends, they love me like that. To the point you were making earlier, this is an NRCS project. If you guys are familiar with the situation of the ditch right there, landmark apartments on by Broadway, and how the road is sloughing off into that ditch. The NRCS is going to help us refortify, they are allowing us money to help get it refortified. Part of it is going to go for the water line, I said relocation. To make sure that we do it properly, they are going to have to kind of do a little digging to get everything to a certain grade. Well, my water line in that ditch is six inches below the bottom of the ditch. We'll have to have someone come in and drop it down. So we do have an out-of-pocket expense of about $24,390 that we do have to pay as a city, out of pocket. The other half is going to be paid for through the grant, the NRCS grant.
The 80, 20, 70,000?
I believe it's 80, 20. With your approval, we'll go ahead and give this project.
Make to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item E, Discussion Action, Approved Acceptance of Bids Received for the 2025 Street Framing Improvements. Award to Lowest and Best bidder at Camp Inc. in the amount of $631,638,168. Allowance of appropriate construction contingency, and for the mayor to execute all documents, including the contracts required for the project improvements.
Thank you. Of course, you guys got the debriefing, or the bid tabulation, or the summary from Mr. Owen, which we all were shocked at how low these bids came in, the prices asphalt was a bit that much lower. So along with this contract, we have 11 streets that we're going to pay. Public Works is going out under the direction of Mr. Owen to go ahead and do a base study on the cost of five more streets. Hopefully, we'll bring those to you soon enough.
Make to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I could have commented, we kind of moved this one up a little bit, sometime a little later in the summer, tried to get a good price on that, too, and we got excellent price on two. And crazy folks across the pond started shooting at each other, and they said the price of all is going up, so I think we did.
Right on time.
Yeah, go ahead, get that one in the lot, did, so I think that's a wonderful, wonderful news. Okay, Item F, Discussion Action, Approved Lowest and Best Quote from Stedfast Services LLC for Emergency Repairs to Slit to the Sewer Main on Pebble Lane in the amount of $49,750. Mr. Liddy, you carries this one.
Back to sewer. I don't know if you guys recall my department head report, when I showed you that huge boy in the pipe. That's what this is for. We had to do it on an emergency clip because I wanted to go ahead and let it to this gentleman before it collapsed. This is probably the only time I'll ever say thank God for jazz and clay. That's the only thing that's holding that boy up and not collapsing. So we have about 200 feet of pipe that we're going to replace. We're going to do it through a method of pipe bursting. It's limited, as far as the disruption to the terrain, so we will have to replace 200 feet of asphalt and curv lines. There will be some, but this is the smallest footprint we can make. So with your approval, we'll get it sorted and paid.
Make to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item G, Discussion Action Approval for Lowest and Best Quote from Environmental Masters to Replace the HVAC at Quiz and Bean Library in the amount of $28,506.91. Mr. Liddy?
My most precious gentleman in the city. As you all know, the library has been there probably 20 years or so now. We're in a position now where it's time to do some major overhauls. This quote was significantly lower than the original quote of about 50-something thousand dollars, I can't quite remember that number. They do have a unit that's completely burned down and is in need of replacing. With your approval, this is the first of many other repairs I'll bring before you guys.
Different topics, same building. We talked about some security cameras back there. Do you know what the status of that is?
I'm working on that now. I met with the camera guy and the electrical guy. The initial issue that we ran into, the camera guy wanted the electrical guy to run power, run the conduit to the light. The power guy said, "Well, hold on, I can do it with a solar-powered light." So I had to rework that back around, saying, "Listen, we just need this to work, y'all give me some numbers." So what I'm hoping is going into this year's budget hearing, we'll be able to have that conversation. I do know that a pole is the cheapest thing, $125 for a 20-foot pole. But the camera system, how we're going to get Wi-Fi or get the feed to a localized spot, it's going to be a little bit trickier. We may need network extenders or some kind of conduit.
I was going to say, rings and sort of.
Well, I'm sorry, I just thought I'd get an update on that.
I had intended to email you, but it's that time of year, bro.
I appreciate it. I move to approve this.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item H, Discussion Action Approval of Quotes for Payment Processes. Mr. Liddy?
Thank you. First, I want to say, Roy, I will never pat this on myself like this again. I don't know how you do.
Roy never spends this. Roy never spends this much money. He's trying to collect money.
This is a payment processing system that will pair up well with Union Link. There is no charge to the city. Like most payment processing, all of the charges will be towards e-checks to the customers or credit card and debit card payments.
Make to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. With the indulgence of the board, I'd like to move to item 10 and let the Alderman-at-Large in Ward Two, Alderman, close out our meeting tonight. So I'd like to move to the employment item. A and B, there's a total of six people to be hired. We've done that only one motion in the past. Could we have a motion to do so?
Make to approve.
A and B.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move to Item I, Discussion Action Recognition of Ricky Garrett, Alderwoman-at-Large. Ms. Garrett has been an alderwoman for eight years and, of course, a longtime member at the state and local level of many, many organizations. And by our tradition here, we'll give her as much time as she wants to say whatever she wants at her last meeting. Ms. Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much. And I would like to say that it has been a great honor to serve as the Alderwoman-at-Large of the City of Clinton for the past eight years. I really want to thank you, Mayor, and my fellow board members for all their support and encouragement and help over these past eight years. And certainly want to thank the employees and department heads of the City of Clinton for all of their help and support. There are many times, of course, when we have questions and concerns and needs among our constituents, and those department heads and city employees have done a fabulous job of helping to meet those needs. I do think Clinton has enormous potential. It is a wonderful city with enormous potential. And I wish my fellow board members and our incoming mayor best wishes for a very successful term of office. It's bittersweet, of course, to leave something that you really care about and have been very involved in over many years. And as I said, it's been a great pleasure to serve in this role and to suffer the pickle of Clinton. And certainly, I want to thank all the citizens of Clinton for all their support and help, too, over the past eight years. You know, I never really thought I would enjoy campaigning, but I really loved campaigning and going door-to-door and getting to know the citizens of our city. And so I really encourage the incoming board, both the existing board members and the new board members, to really reach out and get to know the constituents of your ward or the city and really engage with the citizens and find out what their interests and needs are. And I really hope, too, that the citizens will be engaged with the board and let the board know how they feel about the issues and provide the board with a lot of support and a lot of guidance as they make the decisions that are very important to our city. So I am very sorry not to be there tonight. We are hosting 50 young people from around the world here in DC this week for a youth leadership meeting. And I am, in fact, at a dinner right now where I have hidden away to be able to be a part of this meeting and want you to know that you can call on me anytime. I'm happy to provide any advice or guidance you would like to have from me. So don't hesitate to call on me anytime. And I will make that same offer to the citizens of Clinton to stay in touch and share with me any ideas or concerns that you may have. And I just wish all of you the best. I know it's going to be a wonderful four years coming up. And thank you again for your support and friendship over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. The city appreciates your service, your time and efforts, and we're grateful that you were part of this board and wish you the best as you go throughout your professional career. And we do have your plaque, so when you come to town, let me know, and we'll get together and we'll present it to you. But thank you for yourself. Next up will be Alderman Ward Two, Jim Martin. Jim has served for 24 years, and he served 11 years as an Alderman and 13 years on the Planning and Zoning Board. And we want to honor Jim, present him with his plaque, thanking him for his time and his service, and wishing him the best of luck over the next years of his life.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jim, the floor is yours.
It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the city for 24 years. That sounded like a lot bigger number until we got to Mayor's recognition, which is all the years he's done. So that kind of shrunk, the sound of that number of years there. But I love the City of Clinton. It's been my privilege to give some of my time and effort back to the city. It's always nice to see new families move to Clinton, nice to see new businesses move to Clinton. However, I think that our main priority is taking care of the people we have. Only, we always want to have new things coming to town, but taking care of the people and the businesses that we have now should be our top priority. Looking at our agenda tonight, we're dealing with a lot of infrastructure-type things. And that's not near as glamorous as it is doing ribbon cuttings and things like that, too. But that's what makes the city great, is that we've got good infrastructure. We take care of the things we have. We take care of the people we have. And if we do that, then the other things will come. And so sometimes, while our meetings look kind of dry and not that glamorous, too, I think we've been trying to do the things that we can to make sure we're taking care of our city presently and for the long term on it as well, too. Again, I thank you for the honor and the privilege. I'm retiring from the Board of Aldermen. I'm not closing my law office. I'll still be here in town. I plan to still participate in the community activities and things, or I'll still be around. And I'm looking forward to staying involved in the City of Clinton, just in a different role. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Again, you have honored the city and yourself by your service. You've put in a lot of years in planning and zoning, and it showed during your time sitting on this office, or in this office, being able to recall and quote, and sometimes just find the ordinances and the zoning ordinances that we're talking about. So thank you for that leadership, and bless you in the next coming years and the things that you do. And we look forward to seeing you around town also. We move to other business. I've recorded my statement this afternoon to talk to people about it. It was rather lengthy, and I didn't want to, you know, take up any more time. But I am very humbled tonight by the legislature and by the Alderman here and the gifts that you've given me and the surprise of it all. So thank you very much, and bless all of you. And I know that we're going to see each other again. I'll probably start writing some bad letters to you. You know, stuff I didn't get fixed. Why didn't you fix this in front of me? But I do look forward to seeing the success of this city, and I know it will be successful. I trust the leadership, the new mayor and the new board, and look forward to seeing the things that y'all do. Do we have any other business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to say to Jim and Ricky, you're coming, that I appreciate that it was, y'all received four new Aldermen on this board, and it was you, Bill Barnett, and Ricky and Jim. And so I know that y'all had a task to kind of teach us, new people, green people. And y'all have done a great job. I appreciate the history and the backstory that y'all have given us to understand what we're talking about and that kind of thing. The support y'all have given us and just homework. You know, y'all were good role models to dig in, do your homework before the work sessions and the meetings. So we kind of know what we're looking at and that kind of thing. And also for the mayor, I appreciate, well, all three of y'all were always available if I ever had a question. I appreciate the mayor helping to, with me to understand, especially in the beginning. I'd ask you a lot of questions, and I know that's such a surprise from me, but that's the way you learn. I like the way you are futuristic in our city, Mayor, and how you thought in the future, like the 2030, our sewage project. If we had started now or even a couple of years later, we would have never met that deadline. Hiring a former U.S. representative to navigate the political route to go in the Capitol and then here in our state legislature, with Clay helping us and Philip Gunn, our past representative, and then just giving history also. The thing about sitting down and talking to you, where we're not talking politics, is history. I love to listen to you and your travels, just like with, what you grinning, what you frowning for, Marley? I do love history. And Jim and, you know, Ricky, we all love history and that kind of thing. So I really do enjoy sitting with all of y'all. I wish y'all the very best of luck. I know the mayor and Jim are fixing to hit the road, hit the airplane, traveling. And Ricky will back and forth to Clinton. And I just wish y'all the best of luck. And, you know, anytime y'all have any questions for me, which I doubt, I'm always available. I'll see you in charge.
And you're available for complaints, too, right?
Uh, sure, sure. I'll break a strike to win.
All right. Any other comments, any other business? We have a motion.
What would I say? I know I'm virtual. Mayor, Ricky, and Jim has been a slave of service with you all the last four years. I wish you all the best of luck in your next endeavors and your path in life takes y'all. Wish you the many blessings that I'm very grateful and very thankful to be able to serve you all.
Thank you for that. Okay, if no other comments, we have a motion to adjourn?
To approve. Make to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.